We will call this regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board to order for Monday, October 26th. Madam VP, roll call please.
All members are attending our meeting tonight, but our Madam Secretary is via phone.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for joining us. These unprecedented times have caused me to start our meetings with thanks and words of encouragement. So again, thank you from the board to our teachers, administrators, other staff, and all of our families for what they do each and every day for our students. They give so much of themselves. I know this year has not been easy for anybody, but once again, please remember, we are better together, together we achieve, and we are the best at getting better. We are now going to rise, please join us in a moment of silence for some recent tragic losses in the CCS family. Thank you. We will next move to presentations. It says Dr. Harmis, but I believe he is joining us remotely.
That presentation was given to us by Melinda Stefan from Carmel High School, and she does a lot of the coordination for a lot of our exceptional learners. And just to put that in perspective, to have 60 National Merit Scholars is just remarkable. That is a new track record for Carmel High School. But it's also, you know, probably there's multiple states that could add all their finalists together and would not have 60 finalists. So it's really a, you know, a source of pride for the parents, the students themselves who have worked extremely hard to get to this level, their parents, the teachers, you know, all along their journey who have helped them along the way. And so it's just really an amazing, amazing thing. So congratulations to those 60 students, the National Merit Scholarship class of 2021, actually, because they take that test when they're juniors. So thank you to Melinda and really everybody involved. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Beresford, for putting that in perspective. It is always amazing when we get that list of students, how many National Merit Scholars we do have. Next, we will move on to public participation. We do have a couple of members of the public that would like to speak this evening. The school board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the primary purpose of this meeting is to conduct corporation business and public comment will be limited. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address when you start your comments. Public comments shall be permitted only as indicated on the registration form. Comments may not contain any personal complaints against a student, employee, or school official. You will have three minutes, the green light will, three minutes, the green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light when your time is up. The first speaker we have this evening is Dean Mariano.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Dean Mariano. I live at 2068 Broughton Street in Carmel, Indiana. I'm a parent of a current Creek Size student and a former West Clay student. Tonight, I would like to comment on the assignment of an unqualified individual to lead teaching roles this school year. Until this month, my son was a student in the CCS virtual elementary program. Two weeks into the year, my son's fourth grade class was reassigned from a CCS teacher to a newly promoted instructional assistant. It was put forth that highly qualified instructional assistants were assigned classrooms at that time due to a teacher shortage. However, it was soon discovered that that highly qualified was a meaningless qualifier. From the combination of due diligence and information shared with us, we came to learn that the promotion of a teaching role was a result of a communication error. Yet, the assignment was not reversed upon that discovery. Instead, we were told, give this individual a chance, and a co-teacher was added to the assignment. At every step along the chain of command, from principal to superintendent, our objections were either ignored, or we were challenged to prove the instruction was not up to the standards instead of the other way around. I want to be clear, we contest this assignment for every child in the classroom and not just our own, and I contest every inappropriate teaching assignment made this year on behalf of those children as well. We pulled our child to provide him with the education he was refused. I deeply value public education and hold teaching dear. I believe that no one should be, should call themselves a teacher when they are not. I believe in teaching education and licensing, and I believe that every child deserves a qualified and thoroughly vetted teacher as part of their free and appropriate public education. I stand here to declare a district should not routinely or otherwise assign students to un, or underqualified individuals under the guise of an emergency in lieu of finding an appropriate educator. The decision around teaching assignments made by the CCS administration appointed by this board sets a dangerous precedent in education that devalues the teaching profession. And the resulting neglect to do right by all CCS students sets a poor example for the youth whose excellence we expect. We are all facing unprecedented challenges, and I deeply value the district's effort to meet those multitude of challenges this moment demands. But unprecedented challenges are not an excuse to discard our responsibilities and our values. First and foremost, our mutual concern should be the health, safety, and education of every child, and what I see and what my child experienced here in this district this year is a direct opposition to that form the district's end. I urge the board to demand better of the CCS administration on every level regarding teacher assignments, the elementary program decisions, for the sake of this district and each student therein. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments with the board. Next up, we have, I believe it's Carmela Sparrow. Once again, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carmela Sparrow. Oh, I can take this off. And I live at 12599 Scottish Bend, here in Carmel. I'm here today as a parent of two young boys at Woodbrook Elementary. As a parent of color, along with many of my other peer parents of color, we are thrilled at the start of the hiring process of an equity chief, and we thank Dr. Beresford and all that are, who are part of that decision and making that happen. Also, as someone who has researched Carmel in the past few months, it's been clear that it has issues in race, racism, and diversity. And we know that hiring of an equity chief is mission critical. While we are excited, we come here, I come here today on behalf of many of the parents to ask Dr. Beresford and the board to ensure a parent, community, and family voice in the screening and selection process of the next equity chief. This person has a lot of work to do, and we are eager about the initiatives that will be put into place to ensure the safety and social emotional wellness of all students through true equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we will move to consent. This evening, we are approving the following items of consent, some of which we are ratifying because we did not hold a workshop meeting earlier this month, and I approve those items subject to ratification tonight. The items on the consent agenda are personnel report, claims, payroll, a second personnel report, a second payroll, and a second claims, approval of gift applications. We've had, we had a couple of gifts to the Collegewood Media Center in memory of Grant Gibbs, who was a volunteer in the school as a tutor in the 1990s. We also had a donated laminator to Carmel Clay Schools. We are approving minutes from our executive session on September 8th, minutes from our workshop session on September 14th, minutes from our regular session on September 29th. May I have a motion to approve consent? Thank you, Leila. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Let the record reflect that. Thank you. Next, we will move to action items. The first item on our action agenda is adoption of the 2021 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan, and Bus Replacement Plan. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. At the September 29th meeting of the board, public hearings were held regarding the 2021 budgets, the capital projects plan, and the bus replacement plan. So the recommendation this evening is for the board to adopt these budgets and plans, and then we will forward those on for state approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the adoption of the 2021 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan, and Bus Replacement Plan? Thank you, Leila. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any discussion or any questions from the board for Mr. McMichael? There being none, we will now vote all in favor of approving the adoption of the 2021 Budgets, Capital Projects Plan, and Bus Replacement Plan. Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye?
Aye.
And no opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to amendment of the Rainy Day Fund Resolution. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. The Rainy Day Fund was established by the board in 2010, and since then, the Transportation Fund, the Bus Replacement Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund have been replaced with an Operations Fund. So this amendment is simply updating the board's resolution to reflect those changes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to amendment of the Rainy Day Fund Resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Second? Thank you, Leila. Any discussion or questions for Mr. McMichael? Pam?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the amendment resolution and noticed that, hadn't noticed before, but the debt service fund is also crossed out. Don't we still have a debt service fund?
We do have a debt service fund, but since 2010, there was legislation passed that prohibits the use of transferring funds from the debt service fund. So that's no longer permitted, and we did that actually in 2010.
Okay, so that was, that's why that's crossed out as well as the other funds. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roger, I do appreciate having the 2010 resolution and the red line that made it easier to think through what we were doing, so I appreciate that. That was helpful. There being no further questions, we'll all vote all in favor of approving the rec, the amendment of the Rainy Day Fund Resolution. Please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to the Rainy Day Fund and use of funds, transfer of funds, and additional appropriations. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Yes, this recommendation is really, along with the previous approval of the amendment of the Rainy Day Fund, as the board's aware, we are anticipating using rainy day funds because certainly it's a rainy day during this pandemic. And thus far, the district has spent, or will have spent this school year about $2.5 million directly of additional expenses directly related to the pandemic, and we anticipate the likelihood that as we go to the future, in 21, 22 school year, for example, that it is likely that we will receive either perhaps less funding and certainly not the level of increase that we've had in the last few years. So, so in planning for that, we are kind of setting ourselves up to be able to have funds in the Rainy Day Fund and also to be able to access those. So this, this report has three areas that are, that are needed for action. And the first is to approve the use of rainy day funds for COVID-related expenses and other unforeseen expenses and shortfalls in revenue as a result of the pandemic. So the amended resolution that, or the resolution that you just amended noted that at the time of the use of the funds, that it's necessary for the board to confirm that, in this case, these specific expenses are approved by the board for the use of those funds. The second item is to transfer $3 million from the Operations Fund to the Rainy Day Fund. The Rainy Day Fund has no taxing authority or levy, and so the, the only revenue that's available to put into a rainy day fund is from the transfer of another fund. And so in this case, we're recommending unencumbered or unappropriated funds in, in the Operations Fund. You can actually transfer from other, like the Education Fund, but that really wouldn't make any sense because we're trying to support that fund. And, and then the third item is, once the funds are transferred, they still need to be appropriated. Appropriation is just, the board is just giving authority, and the state is giving authority to actually spend the money. And so the third item that's necessary is to authorize an advertisement of a public hearing regarding an additional appropriation in the Rainy Day Fund. So once we have the, have the funds there, this, it's required that we have a public hearing on an additional appropriation and approve additional appropriation, and then we'll be, at that point, we would have everything we need and the authority to, to use these funds for the stated purpose. So now, I would emphasize that the Operation Fund doesn't just kind of automatically have unneeded funds. What we really have is a situation where that fund, as you know, is primarily used for facility-related expenses and also technology are two main areas. But given the current circumstance, we feel that it's the priority of kind of protecting our, you know, our classroom-needed expenses for teachers and so forth, has a higher priority at the moment than, than what other, these funds would otherwise be used for, for needs of facilities. And so I would emphasize that it's, it's because we're in a very atypical time, and, and it is somewhat of a one-time expense, you might say. Now, we anticipate the, you know, the impact of the pandemic will, you know, will last longer than six months or a year perhaps, but, but, you know, we are anticipating that we'll get through it eventually, and, and then these funds will be, as we get future funds in the Operations Fund, they will be used for the intended purpose.
Thank you, Roger. May I have a motion to approve the Rainy Day Fund, use of funds, transfer of funds, and additional appropriation? Thank you, Leila. Second? Thank you, Pam. Do we have any questions for Roger? I know that we had submitted lots of questions before the meeting, and I, we appreciate all those answers, though I see you've got board members that would like to have questions answered on the record. So, Leila, go ahead.
Aha, thank you. What have my questions for you has to do with the $2.5 million, the expense that we've already had. And for those who are not familiar with what's going on for school finance, could you just touch on what we have had to spend this money on? That's a substantial amount of money, and I think our taxpayers would like to know how we're going to be, what we've been spending that on for our students and staff.
Yeah, so more than half of it, I believe, is spent on staff. We hired, I believe, 13 additional teachers and six IAs as an example to, because of the, really the inefficiency, you might say, of running, trying to run two programs. We're running a virtual program, but we're also running the normal, you know, in-person program, and so, and there's certain inefficiencies associated with that. So that's about half of the two and a half million. And the balance of it is primarily supporting our food service program and our EduCare program. In the, in March, when we, when we closed the schools down, those were two employee groups that, food service, for example, when you're, when you're not in school and selling lunches, you don't have any, you don't have the revenue. And so at that time, through spatial action of the board, we continued to pay our employees, including these employees. And what makes these employees different is, is that in food service, they're relying on revenue from the sale of meals or reimbursement from the federal government. In the case of EduCare program, it's supported with the fees that the parents pay, and so we did not charge the parents because they were no longer bringing their, their children. And so, so we, but we continued to pay those employees, and, and so that's the majority. There is about $50,000 or $70,000 of non-personnel expense for like hand sanitizer and masks and so forth, but the vast majority of this is for personnel costs.
Katie, do you have a question?
It was answered. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no other questions for Roger. Once again, Roger, thank you for providing us all the information. We will now vote all in favor of approving the Rainy Day Fund, use of funds, transfer funds, and additional appropriation. Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to the donation of property to the city of Carmel. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This was previously presented to the board for discussion and consideration, but it has to do with a small amount of property, 0.05 acres at the intersection of Main Street and Fourth Street on the west side of the high school, and right where the library's at and in our west end of our building. And so this, so the city is needing some of our property, relatively small amount in order to, to build out this roundabout. And the impact of the property in question is not particularly needed by the school district. It does, it's not enough. It doesn't go into like our parking lot or anything that would create an issue for us. And there was some conversation about the roundabout and, and, you know, obviously that's a heavily trafficked area and with students walking and so forth as well and going to the library. And so I'd want to emphasize and share that the, that the school district, we have representatives of our own as well as the police department, and then met with the city officials, and so there was, there was quite a lot of input really on, on the roundabout and discussion about the, you know, the flow of traffic and as well as student, you know, walking traffic as well. So we would recommend that you would approve this request, donation of this property.
Thank you, Roger. May I have a motion to approve the donation of property to the Carmel City for expanding the roundabout at Fourth, or creating the roundabout at Fourth and Main Street?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. A second? Thank you, Pam. Do we have any questions for Roger? Leila, your hand went up the fastest.
Roger, I was one of the individuals who really was concerned, and I'm still concerned about the, the capacity and the, the safety of our students and the residents in that area. That is such a heavily used intersection, and my first concern is if they're using now as the time to look at that intersection for busyness and what have you, it is not a fair representation of how busy that intersection typically is because only half of our students are coming on each of those days. And so that's my first concern. And, you know, the backup of the traffic, I've driven our kids' school for several years at the high school, and it's, it's a challenge, and I really am concerned about the safety of our students. Second, I know after I raised that concern, and I know other people in the community has shared their concerns with us, I has shared their concerns with us, I know there has been a meeting with Carmel Police Department, our SROs, our CCS employees. Can you touch on what kind of discussions you've had and are you going to, i- is there any revamp of the initial plan that was shared with us? Could you touch on that for me?
I, I'm sorry, I can't give you very much information because I wasn't one of the individuals that was, that participated in those conversations. But as you said, one, with regard to the, the study, I would feel certain that that, that was done before the pandemic, that by the time, because we've had, I've had this request for probably a month and a half or two months. And, and so it would have been well before that, that they would have, you know, gone, do whatever they do to, as far as traffic studies and so forth. And then secondly, the, the individuals involved, as you noted, the police department representatives as well as ours, no doubt there had been conversation about, you know, the students and, and so I'm, I just feel certain that it wasn't focused on the current conditions. And beyond that, I, I can't specifically address your questions because I wasn't there, but I, I do put great confidence, I guess, in, in our staff that were there as well as the police department and the city. I mean, that's, you know, as you know, they've, they've built a lot of roundabouts. And so, so there's a whole process that goes through and they, and they hire consultants to, to assist them in traffic studies and everything associated with that. What makes this one different for us, of course, is it's right at, you know, our high school. And so naturally there'd be, we would have those kind of concerns.
Leila, I could probably fill a couple of those blanks in for you. Mr. Woodward, who's in charge of school safety, is part of the, met with Toby Steele at the high school as well as, I'm not sure which officers, but it's our school resource officers and then the city. And they're taking a real hard look at the crosswalks and, and doing improvements, kind of like we did down, you know, where the stadium crosswalk, we've improved that area with the city brought that path through. We had a major improvement there. And they're also not only looking at just the roundabout and the crosswalks, but also the general traffic flow around the high school. And actually we had, I think it's on the fifth, we have another meeting with the whole group as we're looking at where the, our bus travel goes and our drop-off travel goes. And, you know, we've had that renovation at the high school and, and so we're positioned well to take a, you know, a kind of a bigger look at that than just the roundabout. So there's been a lot of good conversations going on with that. So I'll reiterate what Mr. McMichael said, that, that it's, they're working as a team to make sure that, you know, we get down to the details on that because it will impact, you know, the, the morning lanes and that sort of thing. And we have to sort all that out, make sure we've got everything set up to flow around the, the high school.
Pam, do you have further questions?
Yeah, I have the same concern as Leila. I know that for the next two years, the, they're going to be renovating the library. So the, the student traffic going across that intersection might not be as heavy for the next two years, which is good, but after that, from what we saw the, at the last meeting, I'm still not satisfied with the way they've laid that out for our, for our students and the, and the traffic because it's not a whole lot different than the ones that are down on 126th Street. And the traffic does not go through there very slowly and they don't wait for the people. So it's, it's still concerning. So I want to make sure that we address that.
You know, given the concerns that have been expressed, it, we could consider having somebody come and give it specific information, perhaps somebody like Toby Steele, for example, and people at the high school that certainly know how the high school operates and maybe, maybe one of the resource officers that, that were part of the conversation. And so they would be able to much better, be in a much better position to specifically address the concerns that you stated. I would expect that they would have had very similar concerns and, and, but maybe if they could offer their insight on, you know, what's, what's being done. Because obviously the roundabout, they haven't started it yet and so they do need property in order to provide for it, but if, but it, they're a long way from any, you know, like final design. And not much different if we're building a school, we get input and then sometimes that, that changes something and sometimes it doesn't, but that might be worthwhile, particularly given the board's concern and no doubt some members of the public as well.
Katie, do you have any questions?
What's the timing on this? Like are we, is there some, do we need to do this now?
I think we're getting to where the, I'd recommend that you, you approve the use of the prop, you know, the, the transfer of the property. But as far as the construction of the roundabout itself, that's, that's not immediately imminent at all. I think if I remember right, we asked that question. I think it was, they'd start on it next summer, sometime after school was out.
Pam?
Yeah, we asked that question at the last meeting, but we weren't given any definite timeline as to how long it was going to take and when it was really going to start. I'm kind of with Katie. Should we hold off until we know better how the, the intersection's going to look before we decide to donate the property? Or do we just go on good faith and say that we hope that they'll do what they're supposed to do?
Well, I wouldn't, I think we would have, I feel more comfortable than just hoping that they do, you know, what we would want them to do. That I, I know that everybody that's, that would be involved in this project, of course, cares about safety and students and so forth. And so everybody has the same goal. And, and it seems to me it's more a matter that if, if our professional staff and their professional staff are all working together, which they are, I think they're, they're likely going to come to a, you know, a very acceptable, you know, solution, whatever it might be. And, and, I mean, many of the people involved, I mean, this is, they are professionals at this, they know, they know what they're doing. They're not educators though, and that doesn't, so, but they, but they, they gather information about the number of pedestrians, in this case, most of them are going to be students, but regardless, that becomes one of the factors. And certainly our high school people are, are going to be very protective and I, it would be, I could not imagine that the city would just do something that we would be very much opposed to. I, I don't.
Well, Roger, and, I mean, in light of, I know that we've got a very good relationship with the city and we appreciate that and we appreciate that they listen to us and that we listen to them. But I just want to clarify that it's the city's street and the city controls the roundabout or the street light or whatever they're going to put in there. And if push came to shove, they've got the power of eminent domain. They could in essence take what they want and take more than at this point. And I guess if you could just clarify that that's accurate?
I was asked that ques, I believe that is accurate, that, that in this, it is the city government that's responsible for the roads, as you know. And they clearly have eminent domain rights as the school district does in, for, you know, different situations related to the school. And so I'm not as clear because we're talking about another governmental entity, but, but I do believe that, that they, they would, because they have that responsibility to, to, for the road and road system, that they, they, they also could exercise their right for eminent domain.
Okay. And then the other question, I think I just want clarification, I think we talked about last time or maybe not, that construction will be the earliest this summer?
Yes.
Or potentially even next summer?
Yes, I think, I don't believe that they know for sure specifically, you know, when it would start. They're not that close to it, to the starting point yet. But they did say that it would not be before next summer.
Thank you. Leila, did you have another question?
No, I was going to point out that push comes to shove, they could just take it for eminent domain. And it's such a small sliver, while I know I have my concerns and I will voice my concerns beyond here to the mayor's office. Because of eminent domain, I, I see that I'm going to support this. I just want to be certain and feel comfortable, so I will still have some additional conversations after the fact.
Thank you. Katie?
Well, I think similar along those lines. I have no problems with the donation of the property itself or the fact that we are giving that to the city. I think as we have all expressed, we would just like as a board to get a lot more information once these meetings are held because we all do care. And I, and the city cares and I know that our high school staff cares. I think we just need a little bit more information about the plan.
Thank you, Roger. So it seems a consensus of the board is to move forward, so we will now vote. Please signify if you're in favor saying aye and raising your hand for the donation of the property to the city of Carmel for the roundabout at Fourth and Main Street, which is 0.05 acres. And we did have a diagram of what the current plan, subject to change, is going to be. So all in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And there's no opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, action, my action item is 2021-2022 Program of Studies Course Changes. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, I bring to you for approval of recommendation, the changes for the Carmel High School 2021-2022 Program of Studies. On the September 29th board meeting, I brought to you several different new courses, modified courses, as well as deleted courses. The most significant changes are in our English department that I explained back in September 29th and we are making the recommendation for you to approve these changes.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Program of Study Course Changes for Carmel High School?
So moved.
Katie, thank you. Second? Thank you, Leila. Do we have any questions for Dr. Dudley since last meeting? Katie, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I just want to say that I'm so appreciative of the time and effort of the staff to look into different courses and offer such a variety of experiences for our students. Every time he's come across us, I'm amazed at all the different choices for our students varying their interest in their future career choices. And I just wanted to say thank you for always being willing to adapt and evaluate to see what's working and what we need to bring in because we know that we are educating our students for jobs that we don't even know about yet. So having that variety is very important. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would echo Katie's comments. I know the rest of the board will, will as well. We get a lot of comments about the size of the high school and this is clearly one advantage of a large size is that we have such a diverse offering of programs. So there being no more questions, we'll, for Dr. Dudley, all in favor of approving the program studies course of change for Carmel High School for 2021-2022, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. There being no nays, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have adoption of policy 2132, reduction in force, recall and certified staff. Again, this is a motion, item that's coming back to us after last month. Again, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. For this evening, recommended that the board approve policy 2132, reduction in force. This policy, the changes to this policy were brought to us by Dr. O'Stryke, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and also reviewed by our attorneys at Church, Churchill and Antrim to make those revisions for the policy.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the adoption of policy 2132, reduction in force, recall and certified staff? Thank you. Pam, second? Thank you, Leila. Any discussion? There being no need for discussion, if all in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye?
Aye.
There being no nays, motion carries. Next, we will move to discussion items. The first discussion item is school board meeting dates. The dates were circulated in advance. Do we have any comments or questions? I do note that there was an additional asterisk that was left over from last year that I believe has been removed. And also that the August 9th workshop is the first Monday that school is set to begin. And in the past, we've changed that date for that reason. Again, this is just discussion. Do we have any comments, thoughts, questions? Katie, go ahead.
I think before we've changed it because it's been the night before the first day of school. So then the ninth, sorry, I think before we've changed it because it's been the night before the first day of school, but this is the first day of school itself?
No.
It's the night before? Okay. And that would be nice to change. My second thought is, and I haven't brought this up before, have we discussed in recent years about the time of our meetings at 7:00 PM? So I know that if sometimes like where our staff is staying from after work or going home really fast, would it be better to do it earlier in the evening since we do also have students in normal conditions that are coming on school nights? I just was bringing it up. I don't have one way or another, I just was questioning because I don't know if we've talked about changing it to maybe a 6:00 PM meeting time. So that's all. Is there any?
Okay, I mean, thank you. Those are good comments. I think it does not hurt to have a discussion on the start time. I guess my personal opinion is when I'm coming from downtown, which I haven't been for the last six months, six o'clock probably takes twice as long to get here from downtown Indianapolis. But I do hear, you know, your concern about students that are attending and our administrators that have already put in a long day and ask them to stay later. So Pam, go ahead.
Yes, that, we've had that discussion a lot and it has remained at seven o'clock. That way people get through the dinner hour and the students, if they come, they don't come for very long, they're, they're, they're brought in at the very beginning of the meeting and dismissed. So I don't see that as, as an issue. As to the August 9th for the first day of school, for me, that's not an issue. And this year we changed it to the Wednesday night and ended up, we gave the teachers two days of, at the beginning of school and it ended up, it was the first day of school. So I think we could even change it later on if we need to, but we could probably just leave it where it is at this point.
I'm pretty sure moving it to the Tuesday was the parks board meeting and that's why we didn't do that. So I'm leaving it on the Monday. My kids are older. I think it impacts you, Katie, the most. So if that is a preference, I would be very happy to entertain moving it.
Um, it would be nice. They're only little for a little while.
I understand.
So are, so maybe that's something that we can, can look into to see if there is, if it's a parks board conflict. Like it, it would, it would be a nice thing to have, but it's not if it's going to disrupt other responsibilities that we have as a board. Lynn, do you know if the Parks Board for 2021 calendar has been released yet?
No, not yet. It's usually just the, for a second Tuesday of the month. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
We could just go back to the Wednesday, try again.
So, so the park doesn't like us approve the board meeting date. It's just forever, second Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
And that would be a second Tuesday, so we're suggesting to move it to the Wednesday.
Yeah.
I think that's a good discussion.
So I think, I mean, we can double check and make sure that there's no other conflicts and then we can see. So, thank you. And thank you for the information about the time, Pam. I'm still new enough that maybe I missed it.
I, I believe the time thing was before my time as well, but maybe, maybe not.
Oh, it's been nearly seven.
Oh, for, I'm sure. I'm sure.
But we have had this probably every three or so years. But we have had this probably every three or so years, because several of us who don't have to go downtown would find it very convenient to meet earlier. But to accommodate our downtown, because there's a lot of people, and even families that might want to come to see their students presented with an award, if they're working downtown, it really creates a conflict. So, I support keeping it at seven.
Yep, me too.
And being speedy.
All right, thank you. Well, this will obviously come back at another meeting for, for action. The next discussion item we have is the first reading of Policy 6146, Debt Management. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So, we have two policies, actually, this evening for discussion as a first reading. And they're policies that, they're brand-new policies that were suggested by our financial consultants, as well as Mr. McMichael. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McMichael to explain both of those policies.
Thank you. Begin by saying that, in both policies, really, they're reflecting, for the most part, what we're already doing. But what we don't have is our formal policies that, that reflect our debt management and, and our reserve liquidity. We've talked about it a lot. So, we think that it was, it is good to have these formalized. One, so that our, our public and those that are interested can see what our debt policy and perspective is, as well as our reserve policies. And then, secondly, both of these are, will benefit us, I believe, with the rating agencies, with Standard and Poor's, and as we, you know, sell bond issues and have bond issues in the future. These are the kinds of documents that, that they like to see. And which is also why, when you read these, if you don't do school finance for a living, it can be a little, you know, confusing or even intimidating. But, but when you work all the way through it, I mean, what it's really doing is reflecting what we're doing. And so, specific to the debt management policy, I would direct your attention specifically to the debt limits. That's really the, the significant portion of this, because it's, under these debt limits, that's, that's specifying, you know, what our, what our limits will be in terms of, and you can see, there's three of them. And the first one would be that we will maintain 3% of the gross assessed value, valuation of a corporation, that our debt level will not exceed that 3%. The second one is, is that the debt service will not exceed 15% of the total operating expenses. And so, total operating expenses, you recall from the budget, we're in a neighborhood of $192 million. So, that's, that's the number they're referring to. And then, the third item would be, is that the net direct debt per capita will not exceed $2,000. So, let me share with you just kind of where we're at. These are, the intent here is that these are very, you know, considered and real limitations. If we'd set a limitation of $5,000 per person, for example, that we would know we'd never hit that. So, it's not, that's not the goal here. The, the goal is to have very responsible, you know, standards and criteria, and, and we believe that all three of these are. But you also see, is, for example, that our current per capita amount is, is just under $1,400. But we project, with our anticipated future bond issues and so forth, that between now and 2023, that that will get up closer to, like, $1,800. So, which is fine. I mean, as I said, these are, these are very real limitations that we're proposing, and not, we've not in any way made them so high or whatever, that we could never achieve that. Our percentage of assessed value is .91%, but we, over the next three years, we have it projected getting to about 1.3%. So, that's quite a bit under the 3% at this point. And then, as a percent of expenditures, we're currently at 13.84%. And so, the limit that we're proposing would be 15%. So, I just wanted to share that with you to, to kind of put these percentages and dollar amounts in, in perspective and what, and where we're at currently. So, so that's the debt policy. And those, those are, the debt limits are really, really what we're focused on. And I'd be happy to respond. Any questions you have on that one, and go to the second policy.
Thank you, Roger. Leila?
Roger, my, really, my only question is the depth of this policy. Is this, are our financial institutions and, I, I guess, the, the Audit Board, are they suggesting that this is all in policy as compared to an administrative guideline? That's, if you could just speak to that, that would be great.
The answer, short answer is yes. There, it's recommended, and, and I'm recommending it as well, of course, that these, both of these be policies rather than administrative guidelines. Because we, it's appropriate that the board, as an elected body and representing the community, approve these. And that it's not, with, as you know, with an administrative guideline, that's with, totally within, you know, the control of the school board. That, now, depending, if there's, to the extent there's a policy, the guidelines have to be consistent and follow the policy. But there's, there's quite a bit of latitude, frankly, to, to meet a board policy with an administrative guideline. And so, here, we, we, we want it to be clear that these policies, these policies are the board's policies. And certainly, you consider the recommendation of your, of your administration. But in the end, you decide whether you're going to approve those policies or not.
Thank you. Other questions? I just have a question, Roger. So, we referred to the finance team, meaning the Associate Superintendent, Director of Finance, Municipal Advisor and Bond Counsel. I guess my question really is more towards the distinction between the Associate Superintendent and the Director of Finance, and then, if the superintendent should have, you know, a role. Obviously, currently, we all rely heavily on your expertise. But as a policy, this will be, you know, without amendment from the board in the future, will be on the books that others will have to deal with.
Yeah, I would say that, that I'm comfortable with this as opposed to, you know, others being on, including the superintendent. Particularly in a district this size, superintendent can't be responsible directly for everything, although ultimately. And so, as with many things, however, doesn't, certainly, the superintendent's staff is, you know, is going to make, in this case, I certainly would make Dr. Burchford aware of anything, you know, that's appropriate that we're doing. And, and as I said, once, once we have this policy in place, then myself and, and our finance director and, and our consultants that we work through are all aware of the policy and, and would not be making recommendations that would exceed these limits in this case without sharing that. Because, of course, as with any policy, it could be changed in the future. But, so I'm, I'm comfortable with, in this case, because we are talking about something that's very specific in terms of, both myself and, and our Director of Finance have, you know, financial background and hopefully some expertise, and as well as our consultants that we work with.
I, I can speak as a superintendent and for superintendents in the future of Carmel Clay Schools, that since ultimately, we're responsible for the, bringing the, the finances, keeping them balanced, and communicating to you that we very much want to be part of the policy.
Thank you. So, we're moving now to the next item on the agenda, which Roger's already talked a little bit about, the reserve and liquidity policy. Do we have any questions for Roger on that? Okay. Thank you, Roger. We'll look forward to bringing these back next month. Next, we will move to reports. First report is the Student Data Report. It is on early literacy screening. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So, this evening, I'm going to share with you some early literacy screening that we do with our youngest learners in kindergarten through second grade. So, first, you know, why do we screen for early literacy skills? Well, obviously, it is a best practice. We want to make sure that we're screening and we're looking for any of our students that might be in need of some additional instruction in the area of literacy. We want to make sure that we are, making sure all of our students are learning how to read, and those early literacy skills are so very important. Another reason why we do screen for our, at our earliest learners, is our Senate Enrolled Act 217. It went into effect last year, and we did our screenings last year as well. But basically, that enrolled act in, requires us to screen our students for at-risk factors of dyslexia. And we have to use some specific screeners that I'll talk about this evening. And those screeners include screening in phonological and phonemic awareness. And when we talk about phonological and phonemic awareness, we're talking about the ability to recognize and manipulate specific sounds in words. Like, for example, phonemic awareness, can the student break apart the sounds in the word "cat"? Can they break those specific phonemes together? And a phoneme is one small sound. So, "cat" would be "k-at". And then, can they manipulate those sounds? So, take the word "cat", take the "k" off and add an "m", what does that make? Can the student blend that back together to be "mat"? So, we're looking at those specific phonological and phonemic awareness. Also, we need to screen for our sound symbol recognition. So, that's if they see the letter "t", they know what sound that the letter "t" makes. Can they identify that, those sounds? Also, alphabet knowledge. So, can they quickly identify and automatically identify all 26 uppercase and lowercase letters for our students for the early literacy? Decoding skills. Can they decode? Can they actually break apart those words and read those words, pronounce those words in writing, in reading? Rapid naming skills. This assessment is actually, they take some very familiar items, such as colors. In our assessment, we do, we're asking the students to name the different colors, but we want them to name them very rapidly. And that goes into, that works on the fluency to see, are they working at being able to name something very rapidly? Because when you do get into the reading and you start to identify your letters and your, the sounds that they come, you need to have that fluency piece. So, that gets into that rapid naming. And then, the encoding or the spelling of those words, taking those words and then spelling them. So, when we think about reading and we think about the, what, what reading is, obviously, the goal of reading is to comprehend what you're reading. We want to make sure that our students can comprehend what they're reading. And the fact, the way to comprehend their students, they need to have both decoding, as well as language comprehension skills. However, if you don't have the decoding piece, if you cannot pronounce the words, and you cannot do that fluently, and, and let's say, you understand the language, you understand what words mean orally, but you're not going to get that reading comprehension, and vice versa. If you can pronounce the words, but you have no idea what that language means, you're also not going to get the reading comprehension. But we want to make sure that, our goal is to make sure our students have that word recognition process, so it's automatic, so that the students can focus all of their mental energy on making meaning. And so, those early literacy skills are so important for our students to be able to make meaning in their reading as they continue. So, the screeners that are administered, we, as I said, we screen all of our students in kindergarten through second grade annually in all areas. And our students in third grade through 12th grade may also receive screeners if the teacher notices some specific deficits. And that's where we're looking at our students that might have some different areas, some pocket areas that the teacher may notice. And we want to make sure we firm those up with some very specific strategic interventions for the students. So, as I said, the students are screened in each of those six areas. And we use a variety of screeners that are very quick assessments. Some of these are one-minute to three-minute assessments that we work with our students. But some of them are given on a computer. The NWA Skills Checklist, this is different from the NWA MAP, skills that all of our students take. These are very quick, one-minute screeners that our students do take on the computer. However, they are not screeners, they're not adaptive, like the NWA MAP. They're just finite set of questions that the students might look at, alphabet knowledge. Also, some of the screeners are given one-on-one for our students. But as I said, the, the screeners are very quick. They're about one minute to three minutes for each of the different screeners that our students take. So, then, we have a lot of data on the students, and how do we interpret that data? So, basically, as we're looking at the data and we're interpreting that data, we look at all of the scores that the student has scored on, in each area. And we, we develop a ranking system, and we rank each of the scores based on the expected range of proficiency for each grade level. So, the students will have those several scores, and then they receive a rank for each one of those scores. And then, we take those scores and we sort our students by the entire grade level throughout the whole district. And we look at the bottom 20% of our students in the district. So, we might look at the bottom 20%, the lowest-ranking students in, for example, second grade. And then, we look at those students that are following in that bottom 20%, and we're really analyzing and looking at each individual student to determine where their schools, their scores fall, and are they in need of specific interventions? We also then look at outlier scores. So, you might look at a student that doesn't fall in the 20th percentile, in the lowest 20th percent. However, they have some outlier scores, or they have some splinter skills. And we determine, do they need some very specific strategic interventions as well for those students? So, we are looking at all of our students with this scoring. And so, one of the, it looks a little bit, I'll just give you a glimpse in how this looks. So, this first student at the top here, you can see, this student is, shows learning needs in almost all areas. And their ranking scores, based on the proficiency of where the student might need to be at that grade level, their ranking scores are lower in those areas. And this student, they need some more intensive intervention. And so, we would look at this data in conjunction with other classroom data to determine what would be the specific intervention the student might need. The student down here at the bottom is, they have some relative strengths in a few areas of concern. And, you know, some of their areas of concern are in the phoneme identification, and then also in spelling. So, we would look to see what might this student need, what type of intervention might this student need as well. And then, it may look very different based on the students. And then, as I said, we also look at the student that may have an overall, appear to be tracking and be ready to go, but there are some red flags. So, for example, this student did not fall in the bottom 20th, 20th percent on the ranking, but he did have a very unusual, slow, rapid naming. So, this is the number of seconds that they needed to actually name. And this student's rapid naming was almost double the average time that you saw in the other second-grade students. So, we would look more deeply in, at this student to see, what needs might this student need? Or does the student need some very strategic interventions? So, then, how do we support the students? So, we have the data, and then, what are we going to do with that data? What will we do to support them? And we have a whole data inquiry process that we go through, looking at each of our students to determine what would, how do we best meet their needs? So, we first look at the early literacy screening data, as well as other classroom data that we have on the student, to determine where the student needs that foundational literacy skills support. And then, we determine, then we look at what instructional interventions might help this student as they grow in their area of needs. And we look at how often we might need to do this targeted intervention, how long should each session take, who's best suited to provide this intervention? each session take, who's best suited to provide this intervention? Is it the classroom teacher? Is it an interventionist teacher? Is it a special educator? Is it an instructional assistant? And then we also want to look at, how will we know that the intervention's working? And, because the goal is to catch them up and then exit them from that intervention. And how will, how will we know that? What data will we collect? And how will we know when the student is ready to exit? And so those are all questions that we answer as we look at each student and their needs. And so in our, the types of interventions or the qualities of those interventions, there are some very specific qualities that we need to look for. And this is outlined in our Senate Enrolled Act 217. We want to make sure those interventions are very explicit. They offer that direct instruction, and they are very systematic, sequential, and cumulative for our students, so that our students are receiving that just right intervention, but it is very specific to their needs. We want to make sure that the interventions are meaning-based and they're purposeful in reading and writing. So it's not just rote activities that the student might be doing, but it is tied back to that reading and that writing. We also want to make sure that they are multi-sensory, where the students are using, they may be using tactile, kinesthetic learning as well as their other senses as they're working on those interventions. And so we offer a variety of different interventions. And again, they are individualized based on the needs of our students. And so some of these are very, maybe targeted instruction taught by the classroom teacher. So this may be in small groups during reading or writing workshop. It's more of, it's happening in the classroom in what we might call a tier-one intervention. Many of our interventions are very short and they're very, they're targeted to the students. So we might have an Orton-Gillingham micro lesson. And so that, our Orton-Gillingham is a multi-sensory program where our students are using a variety of different senses to learn those early literacy skills. It's part of our core curriculum, and then it's also part of those interventions. So the teacher may pull aside a small group of students or a student one-on-one to give them a micro-targeted lesson using the Orton-Gillingham. And it may be a lesson that this, all of the class, it may be a re-teaching lesson, or it could be a pre-teaching lesson, or a lesson specific where the teacher noticed where the student does have holes that need to be firmed up with the instruction. Maybe a one-minute phonological awareness drill that the teacher's working with the students. Or also just a linguistic approach where they're focusing on different word families. And the word families, as you think about, they could be rhyming words, they could be words that are using the same vowel consonant areas. Also, the inclusion of those multi-central sensory instructional methods, as I talked about, so those hand motions, they might be using sound chips, they might be using syllable scoops. So when you break the word apart and then you scoop them all up, and they're using different hand motions to help the student understand from the printed page and get that infirmed in their brain. And so our interventions have really grown over the years, and we are focusing on more push-in where it's happening in the classroom. It's happening, as I said, during reading workshop, writer's workshop, and it may be interventionists going into the classroom, or special educators going into the classroom, or instructional assistants. We have less pull-out than we have in years past. And so we do have some pull-out for our very intensive interventions, but our students, we find that it is much more meaningful when it is directly aligned to the work that the students are doing each and every day in that reading and writing. But we do have some pull-out where it's a small group or that one-on-one instruction. So from all of this, those next steps for our early literacy, and this is an ongoing piece, we started our, we did our program evaluation in literacy. And from that program evaluation, as I shared with you earlier, we have several changes in our English department at the high school. We're continuing implementing strategies from that program evaluation and also in our materials adoption. And so in some next steps, and this was another recommendation, to make sure that all of our teachers have that foundational pieces of early literacy. So we'll continue to make sure that all of our primary teachers understand those best practices in early literacy, to include the role of handwriting in reading development. Many people think that, yeah, handwriting is a very important part of that reading development as the students learn to form those letters. It is tied right back to the fluency in their under-identification of the letters. So it's a really important piece in that handwriting is not just something to do so that they have very pretty handwriting and they could get in the quill of the month club. But it's, it has a very specific, meaningful piece for the, helping the students to imprint that on their brain, that recognition of those letters. And also the importance of the phonological awareness in the reading development, and then also the importance of using that multi-sensory approach to phonics. So working with our teachers and helping them understand those best practices. We also are providing letters training for all interested teachers. And letters training is a very intensive professional development opportunity. And we actually used it, Pam may remember letters training, we used it years ago at Orchard Park, but it's a very specific professional development focused on those early literacy foundational pieces for teachers. This is an online course that our teachers have the opportunity to take, and we are providing that through our Early Intervention Grant Fund. So we're allowing our teachers to sign up for it. And the other great part about it, because it is a very intensive online course that our teachers are taking, but the other great part about it is the Dyslexia Institute actually is offering, if they take the letters training, they would get, receive a stipend. So if they complete it, they also will receive a stipend for completing that, which is an exciting bonus that we are, and we have met, we have about 38 teachers that have elected to do this very intensive professional development on the early literacy. And then also, another next step is we're incorporating the use of decodable readers alongside of the leveled readers. And a decodable reader is for our youngest learners that really is very systematic and is very specific to where the students can sound out all of the words in that, that go right along with the instruction of that word family that they may learn, they may be learning about. It's very systematic and specific for our youngest readers. And then also adopting a Phonics Word Study Core Program for our K-5 as a core program for 21, 22. And this will go in with, continuing with our adoption program. Because of COVID, the adoption, our materials adoption has had to spread out because we weren't able to meet as committees and to review materials last spring. And so we've spread it out, and we did some things last spring, and then we'll continue with those other things. So that's another next step that we will work on with that early literacy. So with that, what questions might you have? I know that was a lot of information.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley. Leila?
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. How long have we been using this comprehensive, I guess, screening program to identify those students who really do need an extra support?
So for, we, for several years, we've been using, we've been really identifying our students that need that extra support. We have only been using this screening, using these specific, and they have to be state-approved for last year and this year, because that's when Senate Enrolled Act 217 came in existence. Prior to that, we would, we use a variety of different screening tools. In the past, we've used AIMS Web, curriculum-based assessments, we've used DIBELS in the past, which are varying different, that did screen for some of these areas, but not all six of these areas. So all six of these, we've been doing for just the last two years.
Second question, for those of our students who are, are virtual learners in elementary school, how are we able to do these assessments with them?
Yeah. So the assessments, as I said, they are either, they do them on the computer. So some of them, they would just go on the computer, just like they did NWA. And others are one-on-one, so the teacher would individually Zoom with the student. And as you may recall, I shared a report back at the very, at the very end of the summer of summer school, where we did have some, we had virtual summer school, and they used a lot of the interventions that we're using now. So for our students that are virtual learners and they need those very specific interventions, they're still getting those in small groups, online, or one-on-one.
And then my last question, during this process, and I know we cannot give a student a diagnosis, but those that we might identify as potentially having dyslexia, what is that next step? What do those families do? How does that work from after we've had our screening?
Sure. So we're screening at, we're not screening for dyslexia, as you're correctly noted. We are screening for areas, skills that they may be at risk. And then we would share that information, and these are, one of the pieces with the screening is, they could be at risk, but then we provide very specific interventions, and then they're no longer at risk as we continue to assess the students and use those screenings as follow-up. And many times, that's what we find as our students that are not at risk. Now, we do have some students that are not responding to those interventions, and so then that's, that's a student that we would look at our building-based BBT process. And that might be a student that we, we would refer for special education services possibly, or for some additional assessments given to that student to determine what else might this student need.
Thank you, Katie. Go ahead.
At what point in kindergarten does this occur?
So last year, we did it, we did not do it until the end of kindergarten. However, we found that so many of our students do come in, and so we start some of the screeners. This year, we started some of the screeners right off the bat. Some of the screeners, we wait, because as you're, I'm sure you're assuming, they're not ready for some of those phonemic awareness pieces or what have you, until they have some instruction under their belt. But some of the screeners, like the letter identification, we start right off the bat. Some of them, we start as, right as we come, you know, maybe in, right in September that we start that. For first grade and second grade, we do those right in August at the beginning of the year.
And can you talk about what kind of communication goes to our families with this?
Sure. So we let our families know that we're, we'll be conducting these screenings. And then after, we, we look at the screening pieces, we don't send home the specific scores because they're meaningless to, it's, it's really looking at, there's a range of scores. But we do then share with our families of students that need those interventions, that we share very specifically. These are, this, these are the interventions, and these are why we're suggesting that your child receive these very specific interventions, whether they be in the classroom or more intensive pull-out.
Perfect. Thank you.
Pam, did you have questions? Go ahead.
Some of these, some of these tests you go through, and I remember going, you know, giving a lot of tests for students and trying to diagnose, oftentimes, I notice that the, that the student didn't necessarily have an issue with some of these things that are being tested, but it was the tracking in the eyes. The eyes weren't able to go past midline, or they were having trouble following. Do we, do we watch for that? Do we look for that, as well as all of these other things?
Sure. Sure, that would be another piece, and that was, that's where they might dig deeper. So and sometimes the students, like in those areas, they may have some splintered skills, where they may have certain ones that they're doing just fine, but like, as you're saying, where they have to read a whole line of information, that may be where they, we notice some other issues, and then we would dig deeper.
So do we, if, if that's the case, do we refer them to, well, we have speech, but who, who do we refer them to?
Well, it would just really depend, I mean, just, in these screeners, they're not specific, like when we used to do the fluency screeners, none of these screeners are the fluency where they're reading lines of text across. These screeners are more specifically discrete. Do they know the different phonemes? Can they name, the rapid naming one, is, they're naming their colors on the Arkansas naming? And so can they track? That, so that might be another piece that we pull in and say, are we noticing that all the time? Is it just on this one assessment? And so we, we might look at some more information on that child. So that might be, it wouldn't necessarily be speech. It could be where we look at, are there some other issues where we might pull in a special educator? And do we go through a whole BBT piece on that? That might, and are we noticing that in class as well? It's not just on these screeners. Are we noticing that, that the student is doing that during his other areas in class?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Next, we'll move to the financial update. Mr. McMichael.
Okay, so we're through September in this report, and you'll, I'll start with our Education and Referendum Funds, and you'll see our cash balance at the end of September was just over $3 million. Keep in mind that it would be, there will be, there will be, those expenses I referred to earlier will be transferred out eventually, and so if they, so there's, the balance, in other words, would be higher once we transfer some of these expenses, some of our expenses to the Rainy Day Fund. You'll see, last year at this time, we had about $3.8 million. So there, so it's, it's, you'd have to have some other information in order, or you might be misled by this, is what I'm saying. Because on the one hand, we have additional expenses, but we also have less revenue because we received about 200, or enrollment was down about 200 students. And so we continue to receive last year's funding, basically, for the first couple of months of school. So that's, that's not totally reflected, but when, as we took the September count, and that works its way through the system, our basic grant will be adjusted accordingly. So that's, that's on the downside in terms of revenue coming in. But we're, but knowing, you know, when you plus and minus those things, we're, we're pretty much on target with where we would expect to be this time of the year. As usual, the, the balance goes down because we're, until we receive our second installment of our referendum fund, we, you know, those, our expenses continue to, or our cash balance continues to go down until we get to November and December. Then our operations fund, again, you'll see the September balance this year is, is just under $500,000. And last year, it was about $99,000. So this, these, the operations fund's not as reliable in terms of comparing one year to the next because of the expenses and the nature of those expenses, particularly in the area of like facilities, can vary from, the timing can vary from one year to the next. So, so we're, you know, overall, we're about where we thought we would be. And then you can see the end of the report is just showing the bank reconciliation. So without our responding questions that you might have.
Thank you, Roger. Pam, go ahead.
Since you said we're down about 200 students?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, we're down 200 students.
How much, and how much do we get per student now?
Almost $6,000. And so you remember, last year, we were up 200 students. And so we always, we like it when it goes beyond what the estimate was, or even just beyond the prior year as compared to when.
So that's about 1.2 million?
Right.
That we will lose? And when will that loss happen?
It'll happen for this school year. They'll make an adjustment as, you know, once they get, once the state gets the September count, then, then they'll, it'll work its way through, and they'll make an adjustment. So we continue to, like in August, we're continuing to get funded from last year's account. And so ultimately, that impact will be for the fiscal year, July, you know, essentially July 1st to June 30th of '21.
Okay.
So basically, last year, we gained 101.2 million. And this year, you know, we, we lost almost the exact amount, or got, received less. So now the enrollment's back to kind of where it started from two years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Roger? Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to board member reports. This month, we have a legislative update. Leila? Next, we'll move to board member reports. This month, we have a legislative update. Leila.
Thank you, Mike. Our update, I will be fairly brief. Just a few things I wanted to let everybody know. Dr. Beresford and I met today, and although COVID has had some setbacks for other areas, it has not had any setbacks for legislation. Dr. Beresford, we, has been working with Seamus. And so all you, everybody, for their, your knowledge, that we are working with Seamus Boyce, who is currently with KGR. We have had a very longstanding relationship with him. And his relationship with all of our legislators, or legislators, is extremely strong and very well-respected. And he's a lobbyist. So we really have a lot of, he's able to help us really share our story. So Dr. Beresford has been meeting with Seamus and a group of superintendents on a monthly basis. And Seamus has set up several meetings. So we've got, there was a few that they've already had, and I know Mike participated in one because I was unable to go downtown. Senator Baining and Senator Thompson, those meetings have already happened. Tomorrow, there's one with Dr. Brown, who is the Chair of the Ways and Means. And then Seamus has set up two others with Senator Pro Tem Bray, as well as Speaker of the House Houston on November 10th. So we are actively engaging with our representatives and senators to really share our story. And, and as Dr. Beresford and I discussed, we really feel like the, the format that we used last year was really an effective way to, to really be that means of information for the, for our legislators. We, it wasn't just a, you know, a nickel and dime, we want this, we want this, we want this. But really, we had that two-way conversation and communication that we were really a source of information. And in doing so, we were really able to share our story and our needs and how we can best help them really legislate positively for our students and staff. So we're going to continue with that. We found it to be effective. And we already had some conversations about areas that we really feel like are very important. We're going to put together our letter and have our board provide some feedback. We plan on having that ready probably in the next eight to 10 days. And we really won't take any action on that until the end of November. But we will have some discussion, if we want to have discussion, at our November workshop. That would be up to the agenda team and Mike leading that. But so far, so good. And we're pretty excited about the direction we're going. A few things that I know that we certainly are looking at, the accountability dashboard. We realize that, especially with COVID, accountability is really important. We want to see our students grow. But what is the best way to measure that? And we recognize that we, there needs to be some level of accountability, but how do we do that effectively? Some of the other areas, finance is a huge area that we are looking at as well. And it's not that we are seeking more money. I mean, this is an opportunity for our legislators to, to rise to the occasion and really shine the light on Indiana, that we have been able to keep our children in school. We've been able to effectively educate, whereas our surrounding states have not really had that, that, that relationship with their professional educators to do so. So this really, really gives us an opportunity to have Indiana be the destination workplace for our professional educators. And it really gives our, our legislators an opportunity to, to really push forward some legislation that would have a positively effect the, the state as a whole. There are some areas that we don't necessarily feel like necessarily impact us, but we are concerned for the greater majority of, of the state. Wi-Fi, the, the gap that students have, that homework gap, because they don't have access to digital, digital media, as well as the internet connectivity. So while we're not necessarily going to put that in our letter, that will be part of a discussion that we have. And the other part that we're exploring, and it's not necessarily for our legislators, but the class action lawsuit. I know we've brought that up a couple of times and have communicated with Dr. Beresford, the dual litigation. And I know we are looking further into that. So if anybody has any questions for me, or if Dr. Beresford wants to chime in, that would be great because we really had a good, robust conversation. And there's a lot, I think, that we are really going to be able to do this, this long session.
I think you did a great job, Leila. Really, since we kind of changed our course a little bit last year to be in a resource for our legislators and really teaming up with them so that they know when they propose, you know, some changes or, or, you know, a new bill, that, how that may impact, you know, the classroom, how that may impact the district, kind of boots-on-the-ground level. And none of us want unintended consequences for legislation that could put school districts in a tough spot or students in a tough spot. And they don't want that either, but sometimes they just don't have a valuable source of information. So that working back and forth and those communications are really, I think, valuable to get the message out. The superintendent group that Leila mentioned is schools from all different, from rural, from metropolitan, you know, to suburban. And it's really a mix of, of different superintendents from different school corporations. So I think it does lend a little credibility to, you know, to working with legislators there, that it's not just an all-about-me situation, but it's about raising the, you know, the whole boat, you know, in Indiana and trying to make Indiana a real, you know, an education-friendly state and a place where people want to come and live and, and people want to come and teach. And so we're going to keep working it. And it's been a pretty positive experience so far. And, and we do have a lot to share. So we're going to do that.
Oh, and one last thing I do want to share with the board. I know I had this conversation with Dr. Beresford. What is the benefit of having a board member at some of these meetings? The fact is, as board members, we are not, we don't really know micro, what is happening across the district and, and how some of this legislation really impacts our, our bottom line. But being present, having a board member there shows the unity of the team, as well as we are citizens and we are voting, and several of us have students. So we are not only a citizen, we're a parent, we're actively involved. And if I'm not able to go to a meeting, I know Mike has filled in, and I will share in advance when I can't be present. So if there's another board member that is able to join Dr. Beresford, even if we don't have all the language for what we're discussing, the fact that we're present and we can make some comments really has a positive impact on our legislators. So I will stay tuned.
Well, thank you, Leila and Dr. Beresford. Do we have questions? Pam?
I just want to make sure that we have at the forefront the funding for virtual education, full funding, so that we don't forget that, because that was an issue at the beginning of this year. And that was something that Governor Holcomb pressed forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for Leila? Next on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Beresford.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. First, I want to thank Roger for a big night, talking through the finances. This was, this was a McMichael night. But him and his team have really done a nice job of, of really laying down some good groundwork and working through this, you know, this, this pandemic situation and really keeping us solid. You know, I know, I've known Roger for a while, and he's a very conservative guy with, with the district finances. And we're a little bit out of his comfort zone. So when he says, "This is good for now, but this isn't something we'll want to keep doing," you know, he's, he's measuring that. And, and we're lucky in our district to have a, you know, Mr. McMichael and his team to, to guide our finances, especially we're in a lot better situation, a lot of our, my colleagues. And a lot of that's because of the fiscal responsibility that they take in that department. So kudos to you. Also to Amy and her team. You didn't mention, I don't think, the summer school, the targeted summer school intervention that y'all pulled off this summer with, and, you know, when, when, like in this case, legislation comes down, you know, there's some ways to deal with legislation where you just kind of check the boxes and, and you're kind of street legal to meet the requirements. Well, that team went way, way beyond that and really turned it from, you know, what I'd say a compliance issue to really developing the program that really screens kids at a lot of different levels and a lot of different ways. And so, and then having intervention strategies to, to respond to that is something. And you could tell that that, that they were just, they were very focused on that. And you and your team did a fantastic job, and it was great to see you package that tonight and share with us. I'll, I'll go pretty quick, but, you know, I like to, to talk about the world of sports. And, and today, just this afternoon, Jones McNamara and Shri Santh Malapiti are now the individual double state champions from Carmel High School. And, and I got to watch them play a little bit. And this is Jones's second year. He, he would, won the state doubles, both team and individual last year with a different doubles partner. And so that's pretty remarkable that that team took care of that. But they won the state championship 606-1, and the match took 45 minutes. So that's pretty dominant. So they claimed the title for the Hounds. So a very nice job by those guys. I had the pleasure of going to Shelbyville to watch the Boys and Girls Cross Country teams compete in the semi-state. And the Hounds, the, the girls won the semi-state. They were led by our senior, Annie Christie, who won the individual title. And, and then our girls cross-country, they of course qualified for the, the state finals. And they have qualified for the state finals every year since the state finals began in 1981. So they've got quite a history there. And they're one of the favorites going to the state finals on Saturday. And there's about three teams that are really up at the top. And so there's, it'll be a real battle for the, for the ladies, but real proud of their efforts. And then the boys cross-country finished running up at semi-state by only seven points. So, and it's kind of the same scenario that we had with Brubuff that, that won. And that happened a couple of years ago. And Brubuff beat us at the semi-state, and the, the boys were able to, to take the title at the state meet. So hopefully, it'll play out that way. But there's going to be a big showdown on Saturday there. And we also had the individual winner, sophomore Cole Matisson, won the individual title. And he is undefeated this year. And he's one of the top three distance runners in the state. So that'll be another big battle in, down in Terre Haute on Saturday. So I'm planning on getting my running shoes on and getting down there, watch those guys do that. We do have sectional football Friday Night Lights this Friday. We're going to play Pike in the first round of the sectional. And it's going to be a big rematch. And the last one went to double overtime with the Hounds prevailing on an incredible defensive play. So it should be another thriller on, on Saturday night, Friday night, excuse me. Last week was our virtual mental health fair. And as you recall, usually when we have the Carmel culture of care, you know, they'll have that night for parents to come and providers. And with the COVID situation, they adapted and pivoted to make it work virtually. And so providers and resources have been posted online for our families. And it's, the fair is capped off by a great keynote address from behavioral pediatrician, Dr. Nerissa Bauer. So they kept that, you know, that tradition alive and moving. Last week was also National Safe Schools Week. And I would encourage everyone to check out our top seven safety tips for parents and all the resources we have available online in our Student Services Division. They've done a nice job of giving parents some real good and practical tips that they can use. We also celebrated National Bus Driver, Bus Monitor, and Mechanic Appreciation Week with many shout-outs and a lot of gratitude to our transportation team. They make a big difference in making that first contact with students in the morning and the last contact in the, in the afternoon. And so we're real proud of that team and glad we were able to celebrate them. I want to remind everybody that the redistricting process has continued. And the final focus groups are getting, are concluding or closed. And the public, the public survey opened today. So today, the three potential redistricting plans were posted. And parents can engage in that process by filling out an online form and giving their feedback. So a lot of opportunities in this process. And Mr. McMichael and his team is leading that along with a company that we've been working with, Cooperative Strategies. And so the only, there's no excuses to get engaged. And you can look at those plans and, and what this process does, it keeps looking at that and catching the feedback, looking at, catching the feedback, and they keep adjusting, you know, in order to come to a preferred plan and, you know, to bring to the board. So we want to keep that going. Also, some community meetings will be, are scheduled. So there's another opportunity there for some more people to be involved. So we want to make sure everybody knows that. And the, the feedback form and the online feedback is due by November the 9th at 8:00 a.m. So November the 9th is the magic day, early November 8th, unless you're an early morning riser. So try to get that on the calendar. We really want the community to be engaged in that because it's important. Just a, one more thing before I hit my bell ringer here is that early voting has set records in Indiana and elsewhere in our country. And millions of people have already voted, but, and we know that the, you know, we want to encourage everyone to vote. And we know that a lot of the races are getting a lot of attention. But don't forget that the school board race is essential. And it's essential for guiding, you know, our Carmel Clay schools to be the best, to get better. And leadership on this board's a testament to that. And so I encourage everybody to, you know, to, to vote and also to really make informed decisions for our school board. My bell ringer is, my, my title is stay safe. And, and as we head into the ninth month of this pandemic, we're starting to see an uptick in positive cases across the, our, our community, across the state, across the nation. And with Halloween and so many gatherings that, that happen at this time of the year, and with the weather changing, we have to keep our guard up and maintain our safety protocols. And, you know, please continue to make those screener questions a priority. And, you know, ask those questions of your, of your, of your students. And, and older students, ask them of yourself. And also, as parents and, and adults, we need to ask those questions. We need to continue to wash our hands, use hand sanitizer. I know it sounds like a broken record, but that's, you know, the medical professionals have been doing this for years, and it works. That's why they do it. You know, mask up, you know, we kept our masks and, and continue to, to make that. We were so afraid that that was going to be a big deterrent in education, and our kindergarteners led the way. You know, they, they wear those masks and not many issues at all with that. And then, of course, social distancing, keeping that six foot, or it's the biggest, as far apart as you can, but at least six feet. We found also that, you know, we, that we talked to medical professionals, talking about being side by side instead of face to face, and how important that is for protection. And so if we just do those safety precautions, we can, you know, we can make a difference. And so I know what I call pandemic fatigue is setting in. But we have to work together to sustain this effort to stop this spread. So my message for tonight is just to persevere and stay determined so we can stay in school. And so that's our ultimate, ultimate thing we want to do. And also, you know, we're going to want to keep our community healthy and do the best we can. So let's work together and just keep, keep moving, keep sustaining the effort. So that's my board report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Do we have any questions for Dr. Beresford on his report? Katie?
The first thing I just want to mention is, I want to thank you for those who have championed to have voting places outside of our school buildings. I'm so grateful that we have been able to make that change where the polling places aren't in our buildings, and they've been able to find them locations for those. I have two questions about redistricting. The first one is more of a comment. We just want to make sure too, that parents, even if they are happy with the scenarios, that they're also providing that feedback. And we want to hear if they have questions, concerns, but also if they're satisfied with the things. And the second part is, could you explain a little bit? I know I've had some questions regarding the scenarios and what actually the board will be voting. Our next school board workshop session is November 9th, November 23rd is the school board regular session, hard to believe it, Thanksgiving break is November 25th, 26th, and 27th, and our, December 14th is our school board regular session meeting. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, second.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, both included.